The following is a production of The Reporter, Delaware County's leading news source.
I'm going to read the notice pursuant to county law section 151 and board rule number one. The organization meeting of the Delaware County Board of Supervisors is called for the purpose of organizing for the year 2023, including election of a chairman, vice chairman, clerk of the board, and budget officer. Any other business that may properly be brought before the board will be conducted. I ask that you turn your attention to Mr. Marshfield for the invocation and Mr. Reynolds for the closing.
Dear Lord, as we gather this day, thank you for the new year and the new beginnings. We ask for your wisdom and strength in this new year. Guide us and temper our wisdom so that our decisions are for the betterment of our county government and for the nineteen towns and forty-six thousand residents from which we represent. Please help us make peace with yesterday and have an open mind and heart for today. We pray for the protection of our family and friends, our military, our law enforcement, our medics, and our firefighters. We ask that you keep us all distance from enemies and their evil intents. We ask these things in your name, who shares our life in joy and in sorrow, in death and in new birth, and in despair and promise. Amen.
Can you join me as we salute the flag?
Let us salute the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The election of the chairman, do I have any nominations for chairman?
Let's move Tina Mole for chair of the board for seven hours. I think you can organize.
Hi, sir.
You've got to be quick in this.
Any other nominations?
I move the nominations to be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Tina, congratulations. I will call Dentrich, Dentrich County, County Clerk to administer the office decision.
Mr. Tina Mole, repeat after me please. I, Tina Mole.
I, Tina Mole.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
The Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
And. For the county of Delaware.
And for the county of Delaware.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I do.
And I do.
Further solemnly swear.
Further solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or offered or promised to contribute.
Or offered or promised to contribute.
Any money or any valuable things.
Any money or any valuable things.
As considered, according to the board.
As considered a reward.
For the giving or withholding any such motive.
For the giving or withholding any such motive. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. We can't. We can't fit.
It's the chair.
Thank you.
Because you're not sitting up there.
Okay, next is the election of the vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
Mark Tohill.
Okay, all in favor signify or no? The nominations, I'm. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Okay, do we have any nominations for clerk of the board?
Andy Bishop.
I'll second that.
Really looking forward to working with you. It'll be an honor to see you. Move the nominations to be closed.
Move the nominations to be closed.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. An election of the budget officer, do I have any nominations?
Art Merrill.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, Art Merrill for budget officer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda, I have a board committee appointment list, and it is quite lengthy this year. To the community services board for a four-year term ending December 31, 2026, I would like to reappoint Dottie Crupo, Dr. Christine Ratley, and Marian Geriarty. To the cooperative extension board, a one-year term ending December 31 of 2023, I'd like to reappoint supervisor Waylon Gladstone. To the Delaware County Industrial Development Agency for a three-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to reappoint Bruce Dolph and Scott White. To the Delaware County Planning Board, a three-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to reappoint Matthew Gray and Will Outston. The Health Services Advisory Board, a two-year term ending December 31, 2024, I would like to appoint Wayne Shepherd, Director of Office for the Aging, and I would like to reappoint supervisor Art Merrill, supervisor Wilson, supervisor Seta, supervisor Mr. Marshfield, and Dr. Rohan DeSina, Medical Director. For the Soil and Water Conservation District Board for a one-year term ending December 31, 2023, I'd like to reappoint supervisor Ellis and supervisor Taggart. A three-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to reappoint Frank, Frank Batchelor. The Tourism Advisory Board for a three-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to appoint John Campbell from Franklin and reappoint supervisor Merrill. The Youth Bureau Board, three-year term ending December 31, 2025, I'd like to appoint Jamie Smith, Big Buddy Coordinator from Delaware Opportunities, and I would like to reappoint Jeff Staples, Megan Starring, Pamela, Pamela Heldick, and Wayne Marshfield, Hampton Town Supervisor.
I'd also like to add a great big thank you to all these people that serve on these important boards for us, most of whom are volunteers and give up their time and really are significant participants in managing the county's business.
Thank you. The standing committees, supervisor committees will be the same until next meeting. We will announce changes if there are any and will hand out the committee schedule for the year as well as the board meeting. So before closing, I do have some remarks I would like to share. Before I say anything, I'd like to thank my colleagues. This is my seventh year as chairman, and I appreciate your support. I really think that we work very well together as a team. As we begin a new year, I would like to take a moment to reflect on 2022 and comment on progress as we look forward to 2023. We began 2022 with a renewed balance between work and the ongoing pandemic as we continued to work through the ups and flows of the coronavirus, the vaccines, and the continued need to address the ever-changing landscape as imposed by the state and federal governments. The implementation of programs for social reform and the rebuilding of our local economy were priorities as we distributed the American Rescue Plan funds. I believe the careful review and the thought put into this expenditure of these funds allowed us to make wise investments in our overall communities, supporting the most pressing needs both current and future. Just as a recap, we made over eight million dollars in investments, including 2.8 million dollars in upgrades to our community or to our county network services and tax system. Approximately 1.2 million dollars of investments in broadband improvements throughout the entire county. 1.5 million dollars in a much-needed ambulance service for county residents. 1 million dollars in farm grants distributed by the Cornell Cooperative Extension. 350,000 dollars in workforce development. 500,000 dollars to preserve our historic soldier's monument. 265,000 dollars to support improvements of the Delaware County Fairgrounds. 250,000 dollars in upgrades to our DPW gas pump system, which support both the county and local municipal needs. 150,000 dollars to develop a much-needed county comprehensive plan. 134,000 is in support of local community projects throughout the entire county. 50,000 dollars to expand the county drone program. 50,000 dollars to develop a transportation plan in support of local needs for public transportation. And a multi-year investment of 45,000 dollars to support Helios Cares, a former hospice. The committee in this board put careful thought into how the dollars could be expanded in a manner that best supports all of our county residents. I am truly proud of the work that has been accomplished with this funding, and I know that these investments will improve all of our lives in Delaware County. 2022 was not, was not without challenges. Most notably, we were faced with a controversial decision regarding ambulance service and how to best provide this service throughout the county. As with all decisions of this board, we worked through the different points of view and narrowly voted to enter into a contract with AMR to provide backup service, ambulance service, and support of our local emergency squads. The debate and perspectives that were openly and publicly discussed showed the commitment of each and every board member and the people that we all represent. I look forward to continuing to look at not only the needs for ambulance service in the county, but also the overall needs of our local volunteer fire departments and emergency squads. As a rural county, we need to support our volunteers as they provide these clinical, or I'm sorry, critical services in each individual community and fire district. This is a priority for 2023 and is of utmost importance that we remain vigilant in making sure these services are maintained. In 2022, we continue to make progress in keeping the general public informed regarding countywide issues. The demand from the public to be transparent prompted the development of the Delaware County Newsletter, which launched in the fall of 2021 and continued quarterly through 2022. Through the use of social media platforms, we have been able to highlight county projects, introduce county programs, and command county employees who go above and beyond every day. Since launching the county Facebook page during the 2020 pandemic, we have continued to reach new people with a current following of 3,100. In the past 30 days, we have reached 22,000 Facebook users, and we have had 15,000 post engagements with people. In 2023, we will continue to expand the use of social media as a platform to keep the public not only informed, but engaged in county business. During 2022, we completed the Behavioral Health Center in Walton, successfully consolidating these services under one roof. We also broke ground on three new DPW buildings intended to replace the deteriorating buildings on Page Avenue. In 2023, the DPW Engineering Administration Staff, along with the County Planning and Watershed Affairs Staff, will move into their new facility on Bridge Street, while construction will continue to progress on both the new patrol at Bloomville and the heavy equipment repair shop in Walton. DPW also broke ground on improvements at the solid waste management facility, allowing us to make improvements to the environment as well as increase the capacity at the facility for the future of waste management in the county. All of these capital investments have been long overdue and will allow us to provide the best services available to our residents. In early 2022, we passed a resolution in opposition to the expansion of the New York City-funded streamside acquisition program. This led to the same resolution being adopted by all the local towns as well as the other west of Hudson watershed counties and the Catskill. CWG. This led to a series of meetings involving stakeholders and a tour of watershed streamside projects this September in Delaware County. We were able to get the New York City Department of Protection Commissioner along with the state and federal regulators to see the work we do with our partners at the Soil and Water Conservation District, Cornell Cooperative Extension, and WAC to improve water quality and the science-based initiatives. The work put into this effort has resulted in FAD recommendations that include a working route to explore the most robust, least-based streamside programming we presented. I'm looking forward to continued work with all of our partners in 2023 to develop science-based watershed protection that enhances our local economy through investments in agriculture, waste management, and sustainable development throughout the county. All of our hard work throughout '22 resulted in a budget for 2023 boasting a tax increase of less than 1%. In 2022, we will be positioned to pay off all county debt and accomplish most counties will never see. I am, as always, impressed by the fiscal responsibility shown by this board, as well as our county departments that provide services to our residents with professionalism and expertise, often leveraging dollars from grants and outside sources to meet the demands of their jobs. As 22, 2022 has come to a close, we have wished a few important department heads farewell as they enter retirement. Although they will be greatly missed and their contributions will not be forgotten, I'm looking forward to moving ahead with new leaders, new ideas, and new successes. As I look forward to 2022, 23, I see much work that still needs to be done and goals to be met. With the passing of the Climate Act on December 19 of 2022, we will prepare for new laws, new building codes, new mandates, and large investments in renewable energy throughout the county. As with any new land use, we will see controversies surrounding some of the projects, several already proposed in the county. As county leaders, we must commit to supporting our local communities as they face the changing landscape and be prepared to assist our residents with state mandates as they are adopted and implemented across the state. We will continue to work on long-term projects, including the preservation of the Porhaus Cemetery, the construction of a new DSS visitation center here in Delby, and two new shelters to fight homelessness in the county. We will monitor the newly formed countywide ambulance service and evaluate alternatives for the future. We are committed to continuing negotiations with all watershed stakeholders, support community sustainability in the watershed, while coming closer to a limited land acquisition program and enhanced streamside buffer program. We will continue to work with and support the efforts of our county program partners, including Soil and Water, Cornell Cooperative Extension, and the WAC, to protect and preserve agriculture, especially in light of the state's goals for renewable energy, as well as continuing to make progress in promoting the agricultural economy in Delaware County. In July 2023, we will host a medical innovative readiness training with the United States Army to provide no-cost medical care to our residents in the surrounding areas. This exciting program being hosted at the Walton High School is a result of efforts by several county departments and not-for-profit and will be a major highlight of our upcoming summer. Lastly, I would like to thank all of our dedicated county employees. As chairman, I take the time to attend committee meetings for each of our departments, and I am astonished by the amount of work that our employees accomplish with limited resources and staff. Like other employers, we continue to face a shortage of workers, and our departments are doing more with less every day. I have personally witnessed staff commitments being met through remote working, work sharing, and support of each other between departments. We are very fortunate to have the dedicated, resourceful employees. I have been humbled to see the camaraderie and support for each other through the department heads. Delaware County has often received recognition of state and federal levels for the team approach we take to meet the needs of our county. I attribute this to the professionalism, resourcefulness, and dedication of our very talented workforce. For that, all I can say is thank you. Thank you. Okay, we move into our regular scheduled board meeting for approval of our last meeting. Were there any additions or corrections to those? If not, they will stand as submitted. Communications? All communications are for the required to the respective committees. Okay, I will grant privilege of the board, But Gladstone.
At this point in time, I would like to introduce Sheriff Craig Demond, who will talk to us about the Delaware County Threat Assessment Team. Good afternoon, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's a privilege to be able to be here today, to be able to discuss Delaware County's new threat assessment team. As you know, by watching the news and reading the papers, we're experiencing threats, unprecedented threats, not just throughout the state, but throughout the country on a regular basis. And as a result of those numerous domestic acts of domestic terrorism, and highlighted by the act of terrorism that took place in Buffalo last year, Tops Market, Governor Kathy Hochul issued Executive Order 18 for every county to come up with and submit a threat assessment plan. These plans could be supplemented by a threat assessment team. Now, I'm one, I'm not one to hail state mandates, as you most, most people in here know, on a regular basis, but I do believe in this executive order, and I believe it was, it was needed. I'd like to introduce you, Brian Parazon, who's over here at the right side of the room. He works, he is a special advisor and works on special projects. He's a retired lieutenant colonel, thirty years of the United States Army, who's conducted three combat deployments in Afghanistan, one combat deployment in Iraq, and one in Bosnia. Holds a master's degree in, in general administration from Central Michigan University, bachelor's degree in sociology, twenty-five-plus years experience in combat marksmanship, and he's a Harvard University Technical Advisor for Engineering and Applied Sciences. Who better to come up with a threat assessment plan than someone who's done it in live theater, right? For, especially in foreign environments, which I could imagine would be extremely challenging. So I would like to introduce you, Brian Parazon, who will deliver a presentation on our threat assessment plan.
You gotta bear with me, my voice is not good. I have you tested, I don't have COVID, I don't have flu, I don't have the MERS, and everything like this. I got tested yesterday, I'm good. I just gotta get over this. Anyway, glad to be here. Deltat is a threat assessment management team facilitated by the county sheriff's office. It goes to advise stakeholders to mitigate situations that might crop up in the county. I'll go through these, and if you have any questions, you can stop me or we can do questions at the end, all right? The team will act in collaboration with government and community stakeholders with a range of expertise and resources dedicated to identifying, assessing, and managing the risks of potential violence in the community. All right? So in other words, we're going to get a bunch of people together, we already had a, a, a formative meeting to get some people to, to, who we're going to look at, that are going to be able to provide different perspectives within the county based on everything from social services to education to law enforcement to large employers, and that's going to form the basis for this committee, for this team. This also fills the requirements of Executive Order 18, which every county had to have by the end of December. Okay? Threats. We really, in, in, we don't have the infrastructure and the activities in this county that a lot of bigger counties have. We just don't. So in looking at what, if we were going to look at what the biggest chance of a threat would be, there's really a couple that would be the, the largest probability of something happening. Okay? So we're a partner with stakeholders in order to address potential threats to the state and county security of the residents of Delaware County, identifying potential threats and developing and implementing strategies to mitigate these potential threats. So it's going to require awareness from people about what's going on throughout the county and then coming together, and there's, if you, when we get into it, there's going to be the pathway to violence, which is, the team is going to talk about and learns about. And this was brought up by the FBI, they developed us, and they found that somebody who engages in an act of violence doesn't just wake up in the morning and say, I think I'm going to go out and shoot up a school. It's something that happens over a period of time, and there are seven different steps that they go in the process that they go through before they actually carry it out. And so the whole concept of the pathway to violence and what we look at is to divert somebody at whatever step they are on that pathway to violence before they get to the phase where they carry out what they're going to do. So that's where these stakeholders come in that will provide the services along, depending on where they're at, to maybe mitigate this and prevent it from happening. Potential threats, they need to be examined in our geographical area, there are anarchist-type of anti-guillotine activities, active shooter events, and incel activities. I'll go into that in a minute. So school shooter. Mental illness. That's the number one, and there's a triad of things that are common to most active shooters. Mental illness, and mental illness is what is, drives just about everything that goes wrong in our society today, as we well know, but active shooters, mental illness is one of them. Okay? Broken homes. All right? When you're in these broken homes, they observe acts of violence, dysfunction, which creates mental health issues. Okay? They, they feed off each other. Broken homes, absent fathers, things like that. We have to sit, that's the same thing that we deal with to deal with in our cities, whether we want to admit it or not. And then the other one is economic insecurity. Major study by Northwestern looked the effect of economic conditions on the prevalence of school shootings and concluded there's a significant correlation between the periods of increased economic insecurity and periods of increased gun violence at schools. We know that from the standpoint of just what happens in domestic situations. Husband loses the job, wife loses the job, and everything goes, because things go bad between them, kids feed off it, and then they bring that to school with them. All right? Twenty-seven percent of attackers exhibit an interest in violent movies. These are all common themes for active shooters. Thirty-seven percent of attackers exhibit an interest in violence in their own writings, poems, essays, and journal entries. poems, essays, and journal entries. Do you remember the school shooter last year out in the Midwest? That they brought him into the principal's office, they talked to him, brought his parents in, they brought him in there because the teacher observed him writing all these drawings and saying all these things, and then they brought him in, they looked at him, said, "Nah, you're good," they sent him back in, and then he did what he did. That was an indicator that was ignored. You're gonna find that most of these active shooters, and most of these wanton acts of violence that happened, there are warning signs flashing, and everybody ignores them. You can't do that anymore. Fifty-nine percent of attacks occurred during the school day. How many of you walked into one of your local schools with unimpeded access, when there shouldn't be unimpeded access, okay? I know it happens, back doors left open because somebody doesn't wanna have to go unlock a door so somebody can do a delivery. It happens all the time, okay? Sixty-three percent of attackers had a known history of weapons use. Sixty-eight percent acquired the weapon from their own home or that of a relative. Ninety-three percent of attackers engaged some behavior prior to the attack that caused others to be concerned, but not concerned enough to do anything. A lot of times, it's family members, and who wants to say anything negative about a family member, what you're up against? Ninety-three percent of attackers planned out the attack in advance. Like I said, people don't wake up in the morning and just decide they're gonna go do something. And there's, that's part of that pathway to violence. There's a planning phase, there's an acquisition phase, there's reconnaissance phase, all these different things that happen, and that's where we're supposed to come in. Right? Ninety-five percent of attackers were current students. Very rarely is an alumni, okay? And odds of one in a million that a student will die at school as a result of a violent act. While it doesn't seem like a significant statistic, or that your chances are very high, to that one in a million that it does happen to, those chances are pretty bad, okay? And the more permissive you make the environment, the more likely something like that can happen, all right? So, we know that in schools, there has to be a certain atmosphere that's conducive to learning and growth and all that kind of stuff, but you also have to temper that with the fact you have to put certain security measures, but also, along with the security measures, are gonna be what the Deltat will do, is they will take information that comes up from these instances where people knew about things beforehand, and hopefully bring that to the table and maybe do something about it before it gets to the point where they actually do it. Incel, involuntarily celibate. The Idaho murder suspect is a classic example of an incel. Stabbed four people to death last two, a month ago now, okay? Loner, bullied, predominantly by females, socially awkward, introvert, unable to establish or maintain relationships, okay? These are the types of people that tend to carry these types of activities out. School shooters, incels, they have some similar traits, but then there's other things that motivate incels that don't motivate school shooters, okay? Here's one, just an example, plotting mass shooting against women in a university. One of the things that a lot, most of them all have is they all have stuff on social media. They all post stuff. Incels have. I can't say this firsthand, because I don't have a Facebook account, I don't have any social media, I stay off it completely, okay? But, I do that not out of ignorance, but out of deliberateness. They post all this stuff before they do it, and you see, find out about all these active shooter events, and they go, "Oh yeah, he had, he was talking about this thing and talking about that thing." And they're like, "Well, why didn't you say anything?" "Well, I didn't think he was gonna do it." It's just like the person that tells everyone they're gonna commit suicide, and when people ignore them, and then they do it, they'll go, "Yeah, I heard him talking about it, but I never thought he would do it." Nobody said, reached out to him or tried to maybe get him some help, because that was a sign, that was a call for help, all right? So, we need to talk about the current threat environment, that's gonna be part of the plan, identify the stakeholders, intelligence and information sharing that works. Now, one thing you have to understand, this is, we're not gonna become the Ustasi or the NKVD. This is not something that we're gonna be like, writing people's stuff down and developing a database to spy on people. This is purely voluntary, it's confidential, there's nothing written between groups or anything else. Everybody has their information, we share it, we advise each other on things, and then, and we formulate plans to possibly address an issue, and then those people that brought the issue to the table go back and address it, okay? It's not some secret thing that we're gonna be doing. Public outreach, threat assessment management teams, we've already done, threat reporting processes, management processes for the threats, training, physical security measures for critical infrastructure, active shooter training, support school safety planning, leveraging grant funding, and share unique domestic terms, targeted violence prevention plans and activities. You know, one of the things they've never really done in the county is have a standardized procedure and process for evaluating schools for security. Every school just kinda does it, and they sorta do it, and some of them may have a checklist, some of them may just do a walk-around, but there's no standardized process that people can go and measure everybody on the same set of standards. We have that for almost every other type of activity in government, where there's all these standards and everything else, but for schools, they don't really have anything. And this is one of the things we want to do in the county at least. Nineteen individuals, nineteen individuals with talents that has within its borders state-owned government buildings, these are threats. Two border wars supply reservoirs, a SUNY campus, ski resorts, several large summer resorts, also home to a number of businesses that employ over a hundred people. We've heard of cases where a disgruntled former employee goes back into FedEx or UPS or some big corporation and shoots a bunch of people. Usually happens in bigger employers, okay? So, these are the things we have to, we want to be able to look at, and we want interest from them in. Risk assessments are deducted in high-risk terrorism facing Delaware County would be an attack on a large group by simple means, such as an active shooter or sabotage of local critical infrastructure. Risk is based on ease of carrying out and ability to access target locations and people. Anybody who wants to do something in the reservoir can just walk down there and stand on the bridge and do it, let's be honest, okay? Anyone, somebody who wants to do something in this county building, they can walk, they can drive right up and do whatever they wanna do. Everybody's unprotected, really, in reality, okay? Remember the Oklahoma City bombing back by Timothy McVeigh, all right? You can't stop it all, but if you can stop it, if you can get to them before it happens, that's how you stop it, yeah.
I just wanna bring to your attention, and it may come up, but we've got one of the largest electrical subsidies in the world in Delaware.
What happened just recently in, where was it, where they shot the?
Yeah, North Carolina.
Yeah, again, and this is.
That's nothing compared to what this.
Right, but you're a hundred percent right. So, we can't necessarily, we can't protect everything, but that's treating the effects, not the cause. We have to worry about treating the potential causes instead of the effects.
So, the message is, instead of, you know, going through and hardening all these things, like our individual school buildings, one of the things the individual schools have been doing is hardening their entrances, right? So, they've got these Sallyport entrances, where you gotta go through a series of doors and be checked in, a bolt group of glass, but if you walk fifty feet to the left, you're eye level with a school with a window to a classroom that has a regular pane of glass in it. So, the message is, you're never gonna be able to do anything to harden all this infrastructure. It just isn't, it's physically impossible, all right? So, what do we do to prevent, all right? And that's, that's where this whole threat assessment team goes. What are we gonna do to prevent, to come together as a community, to come together as different professionals from different areas of life, and talk about these things? Because as Brian said earlier, post one of these events, what we've heard over and over and happen again is, someone knew something. Someone knew this guy was acting, this girl was acting a little funny, or acting off. Yeah, but you know, it didn't really put two and two together. Well, now what this is gonna do is it's gonna bring all these different disciplines together, whether it be the employment sector, the school, mental health, social services, what, we've invited the ASPCA and animal rights groups to this threat assessment team, because a lot of people, when they experience people that abuse animals, what do they turn into? They turn into threats in general. So, what that's gonna do is it's gonna bring all these people together, and we're gonna talk about any specific threat that may be happening within their region, within their area of expertise, right? And as Brian indicated, all right, it's all very informal, all right? And what the team will do is they'll look at that situation and they'll determine, is this person on the FBI's standard protocol and the pathway to violence, is that person on that pathway? Do we believe the indicators are there, they're on that pathway? If the answer is no, it's over with. If the answer is yes, okay, then what the team is gonna do is they're gonna put together the services maybe outside of that silo, right? To give those individuals that brought that potential threat to the table, some resources that may be able to address that. Now, whether that school district, whether that employer decides to take that and do something with it, that's their decision, that's up to them. There's no enforcing that. There's no, there's no one, there's no one in charge, there's no one enforcing that. Granted, if the situation is an immediate threat, it's determined in this threat matrix, if it's an immediate threat that requires immediate law enforcement intervention, then that's, of course, that happens. But these general feelings, these general, you know what, I have this employee, he's acting off, we're probably gonna have to let him go, really don't trust the way the person's behaving, maybe we should engage with him somehow. We'll set up that employer with the resources that they need to hopefully present a plan to address that situation, okay? Are we ever gonna be able to catch every situation? No, absolutely not. But at least, post-event, if we have a post-event, we can say, "We tried. We tried. We tried our best to put something forward to mitigate these circumstances." Because right now, a lot of times when we hear about it, you know, those of us in the law enforcement sectors are, "Wow, if we only knew." So, now we're gonna try to not only make us aware, but everybody aware, so we're not operating as independent silos, as I mentioned before, working more as a team.
It consists of a broad spectrum of agencies, employers, service providers, government agencies, officials, and other persons and organizations or agencies. Maybe they'll provide services inside or assistance, as the sheriff was just talking about, because they have awareness, they have visibility of the people that they're concerned with, okay? So, intelligence, we, people hear intelligence, they hear, they all wanna think about people spying and things like that, that's not worth it. Intelligence is just information, okay? And when, I've had cases with my own kids where they come home and said that they saw some, you know, somebody posted something on their Facebook page about doing something and showed it, and I brought to the attention of somebody else, and they looked at it, and they went through it, and they found out what the motivation was behind it. It happens, and if people do that, that a lot of times heads things off, because sometimes it's just done for attention, but then sometimes it's done because people have ulterior motives. And you, we need to know about it. If we don't know about it, we can't address it, okay? School resource officer program, the school resource officers are in the schools, talking to teachers, talking to students, they can see things, they hear things, okay? We're gonna have regular meetings, and we'll interface with different people based on what their perceived problems might be, what their issues are, and help them develop strategies. So, once we're fully operational, then people need to be aware of us, and they're gonna need to understand what the capabilities and what the purpose of the Deltat is, and that is, and what it's not. Utilized county resources and awareness campaign we developed and implemented in order to provide public awareness and on the mission and purpose to the citizens of the county. Information meetings, public service announcements through the sheriff's office website, publicity through local newspapers, undermedia will be used to inform the public of the goals of the Deltat. Additional resources can be coordinated, disseminated through the sheriff's office social media. Be advisory assessment team, we're approximately thirty people involved in the formation of the team. County emergency services, Delaware County Board of Supervisors, state and local law enforcement, primary and secondary schools, Office of Mental Health, Department of Social Services, District Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office, local hospitals, family court, probation, county veterans advisor, local humane society, and we'll seek cooperative engagement with employers and leaders of faith-based organizations. Pretty much anybody who wants to have a stake in this could have one. They receive training, everybody, we're all gonna receive training, because we all have to learn the pathway to violence and what the actual meaning of each one of those steps are, so that we can educate others. We've got some large employers that send some people, which is good, because that's where you normally have these types of issues, but they also, more people, more things get talked about, okay? And it's helped, it's to improve and increase communication with everybody, and sharing of information. And also, they can be reported directly to the sheriff's office through the anonymous tip line or calling nine-one-one. There'll be cases that will be presented to the TAT for assessment evaluation and development of possible courses of action to mitigate the threats. Entities that present cases to the TAT will be advised by the Committee of Participating Member Agencies, possible consideration to mitigate the threat. Basically, I'm bringing something to the table, these other people are gonna say, "Hey, we can help you with that," or, "This is the person you might wanna talk to," instead of somebody just trying to stumble around doing it by themselves. Okay, the TAT coordinator may identify specific people, may task certain people to deal, to help deal with it, because sometimes people don't know what to do and have no idea which way to go with it. We'll track cases, ensure that parties assigned the case will update the committee until such times they determine that the threat is mitigated and stabilized. So, that means that we want people to close the loop. A lot of times, things happen, somebody reports something, they say, "Yeah, my God, I'll take care of it," and then you never hear about it ever again, you know, whether it's ever resolved. And we can't live that, because we have to know that it's taken care of. And we're gonna have another meeting after the first of the year, and the state will probably create some type of reporting system that when we have cases that we're gonna have to do something, but we have not been given any further guidance from the state on what their requirements are. We'll develop a physical security assessment matrix, as we were talking about, specifically mostly for schools. We've gotta come up with something, and every school building is unique, but they also have a lot of commonalities. So, we have to look at that and come up with a threat assessment matrix that we can go to every school, go with the school administrators, and do an assessment, and standardize things so that we all know what we're looking for, and then take that and help them formulate plans and proposals for them to be able to increase their safety of their students. Some of it, those of you in the fire service, what do they talk about when somebody, when you're leaving a building, when there's a fire drill? What do they tell you to do? Steve?
Yeah.
Close the door, right? Right now, they all want to close the door, because you don't want it to, you don't want it to feed, you don't want it to spread. In schools, something that's as simple as that, closing that door, okay? But we gotta point that out to people, because sometimes you're in someplace so often, so long, that you don't see things that you should see. That's why having people come from other places to do evaluations, see things that you don't see. Current events continue to show the evolution of terroristic threats and their increase in frequency. The assessment process must evolve according to meet these new threats. Threat TTPs, which are techniques, tactics, and procedures, are an evolutionary phenomenon, and in order to mitigate new threats as they develop, the threat assessment team will spearhead bringing more, bringing together the right resources in order to meet the specific needs of each community in the county with their unique issues and concerns. What was being done by terrorist groups and everything ten years ago is not, is being done completely differently. They keep changing. They wanna stay one step ahead of everybody else, and so, we're always playing catch-up, but we gotta narrow that gap of that catch-up in order to mitigate things before they go to their final conclusion. We're looking at active shooter training for different organizations, and hopefully, this year we'll have something, we'll develop something that we can employ, that we can do that's practical. A lot of active shooter training tends to be overcomplicated for most people, and we need to cut through some of that. And Department of Education, State Police, Post-SEs, and various local school administration boards are all involved in the school safety planning process. We incorporate federal, state, local, community, and school stakeholders, when possible, as participating member agencies. These state corps will be committed to assess and develop mitigation plans for cases that are presented to the Deltat. So, we have some of the stuff with, like with schools and boards of education, there's confidentiality issues because of ages and things like that. We have a lot of different things to work with, depending on what We have a lot of different things to work with, depending on what group of people we're working with, and we have to develop plans to deal with those peculiarities as they come up. So, grant funding, what's available out there, what's gonna be available, we will try and take advantage of that. It will help mitigate some of our costs that it's gonna cost the county to implement this whole plan. There's gonna be a cost, because there's manpower involved. Manpower costs money, we all know that. Additional programs focused on detection and response of domestic terrorism, attorney to violence. Sheriff's Office will collaborate with other agencies and stakeholders to offer other programs and services in order to prevent such acts. So, this is an evolutionary process. So as we go along and other counties go along, they're all gonna have lessons learned from their formation and what they start doing, and then the different counties are gonna share that, and then we can update, modify, delete, add different things to make our programs more effective. These proactive initiatives provide a source of support for individuals that helps eliminate grievances and potentially keep the individual from escalating on the highway of violence. In the same way that the agency's anti-recidivism reentry support and proceed to prevent further crimes and poor quality of life, these following programs may help individuals and prevent them from evolving into future threats. If we can provide services and get people redirected and get them engaged in other things that are positive, a lot of times, that's all it takes. And you've heard lots of stories of people that had their lives changed because somebody intervened somewhere along the way before they did something really stupid. And they'll tell you that. And then there's other people saying, there's nobody there, everybody ignored me, so I got everybody's attention my own way. And that's what we have to prevent. The oversimplification of it is, somebody's looking for attention, and we need to give them attention in a positive way to divert them someplace else. There's a lot of moving parts to this. It's gonna take time, there's gonna be a learning curve for everybody, but with cooperation from the towns and the different organizations, businesses, county services, county agencies, we should be able to make this work. And we're working in conjunction with other counties too, and getting feedback from them on what they're doing, and we can just move forward that way. But anybody have any questions?
Brian?
Sir?
As a finished product, will there be data out there given to the community, such as, say, in towns and villages, for their facilities, churches, grocery stores, that are, that may be in the midst of a shooter event?
What kind of data?
Well, I've actually gotten some of this myself for the town, if we had an active shooter threat, what to do.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're definitely gonna develop those programs.
No, but I would really like to have it come from you guys.
Sure.
I'm gathering stuff on my own, but is it...
A lot of it is very complicated, as Brian indicated, and so we're gonna try to come up with a more comprehensive or less comprehensive, I guess, simple version of how we can teach people what to do in an active shooter situation, so they don't have to remember sixteen steps, they have to remember three or four.
But I see churches involved.
Some of them do, yeah, some of them are doing it.
Your Buffalo store.
Sure.
We've done a number of threat assessments for churches in Delaware County already, so yeah, that's something that we're familiar with, we do currently, and we'll continue to do those things if we move forward. Absolutely. Churches, schools, as Brian said, schools is a big deal, because we wanna come up with a uniform approach to school safety, right? Because right now, everyone just kinda wins it and does it their own way. So we have, you know, fifteen different school districts operating in threat assessment through fifteen different ways. You would think the state by now would've come up with a standardized threat assessment law. Now we're gonna be doing that, we're gonna be coming up with a way, and the ultimate goal will be to take teams from outside of that district to critique each other. Because just like Brian indicated, if I work in this room every day, guess what? I don't see these marks on the wall anymore, I just don't see them. I don't see them after a couple of weeks. So, but a frustrated eye is coming into that environment, will notice that and point those things out. Just one.
I certainly wanna thank you for being an aggressive sheriff. I'm making sure the residents of this county are always protected. I think this presentation, I think highlights the importance of these threats. My question is, is there any resources or equipment you need right now to help speed up this team to get in place quicker while you're working towards finding other grant funding?
Immediately?
Because I feel the board supervisors wants to help.
Right, and you know something, I'm gonna start by saying that I am very, very blessed. I'm very blessed by a lot of things. I wanna echo what the chairman said. We're blessed with just wonderful employees in this county, we really are. We're blessed by wonderful department heads, we work together as a team, that's how you get stuff done, is to relationships, team building, and we're blessed by that. Whenever we've really needed something at the Sheriff's Office, this board has always supported it, and I'm forever grateful for that, you know? And the people of this county are grateful for that. So, yes, thank you. Immediately, no, probably the most immediate thing that we need is a mobile command center, and we just, we have that in order actually now. Scheduled to be delivered in the spring, thanks to the graciousness of our partnership with Steve Foot and the Department of Emergency Services. Almost all of that's funded by grant funding, so that's probably the most urgent thing, but as we move forward, and Brian makes his assessments as the Deltat team leader, I'm sure that I'll be back, you know, with certain things that we might need, but we're comfortable knowing that we'll be supporting some of them.
I can allay any of your concerns about whether or not I can come up with ways to spend money for you.
No, no, no.
I'm this, once we get going.
He has a famous saying, it's nothing that a couple million dollars can't solve. No.
Greg?
Greg?
Is there any correlation between drug usage and any of the...
I don't see that much as far as a direct connection, but I would speculate that drug use is an integral part in most of those people's lives anyway. But not necessarily. The Idaho dude that killed four people, I mean, that's a mass casualty event. Drugs didn't come up as part of that for him. We don't know what the toxicology reports were for all the people that were killed. And the other ones, the volatile shooter, those, it really wasn't that much, it wasn't talked about that, it was mental health stuff, and it was, you know, family problems and issues with the kids upbringing that tended for that type of thing. Incels is another whole ball of wax, and they have significant mental health issues. And that's probably, if you were to pick one thing as the common denominator for all of its profile.
The other question was, what's your timeline on any of this?
We're meeting again, we're bringing the team together again this month, as Brian indicated, we already brought the team together, we had about thirty people in attendance for our first meeting. So we'll be bringing them together this next month, and we'll be asking them to bring cases, potential cases, to the team. But we're also gonna be, it's gonna be a two-fold meeting, we'll also be, as Brian indicated, be conducting training, so that everyone understands that. We did the training in our initial meeting, but it's gonna take some time. Learning this pathway to violence, this model, will take some time to get everyone through, and how we go about evaluating each of those cases through each of those seven steps. So it'll be two. We're gonna have another meeting this month, and we will definitely be, you know, moving forward, as we move forward, we'll develop even more.
An assessment of the schools is a top priority, I guess you want to add on to that.
Of course, yeah. Schools are the biggest threat.
Greg, is this an ongoing committee? I mean, I think probably the mindset of different things will change over the years or new things will come up, mental health-wise, and so, is this something that's gonna continue more?
Yes, the answer will be yes. I think it will always have an need for it.
But will a committee stay focused and active for many years? Or are they gonna be done by the end of this year?
I don't think the multitude of dysfunction and threat that we have is going away anytime soon. So I think that, yes, we're gonna be busy for a while. I mean, there's a team that was established prior to the governor's executive order out in Rochester, it's called Rocktack actually, and they actually started about four years ago as a result of a horrific situation that happened out there in their county that everyone seemed to know about, but no one did anything about. And they have literally saved, they believe, there's been different incidences over the years. Their team is still thriving and going strong after four years. I continue, we actually had them come down and deliver the training to us. That was our first meeting, was the members of Rocktack, the sheriff out in Erie allowed that, and we're very grateful for that. So yes, the short answer is yes, I see it coming forward.
As long as there's an office, I hope there'll be issues, people having mental health issues, so we'll be, it'll continue.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, does the supervisors have any standing committee reports? Okay, then we will move on to resolutions. Okay, resolution number one.
I second that.
Reappointment Commissioner, Board of Elections, Democrat. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Resolution number two.
I'll bring resolution number two to the floor and vote for its adoption.
Second.
Reappointment Director of Emergency Services. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carry. Resolution number three.
I bring this resolution forward, move for its adoption.
Reappointment Director, Office for the... All in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Resolution number four.
Bring resolution number four to the floor and ask for its passage.
Second.
Appointment Personnel Officer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Resolution number five.
I'll bring that one to the floor.
Second.
Reappointment Public Defender.
I have a question. Is this hundred and eighty thousand mandated by the state?
No.
Not yet.
In the right.
So it's not?
No.
These were separate resolutions, the appointment I'm in favor of, the hundred and eighty I'm not in favor of, on behalf of the residents of Delaware County in July, we'll vote and all. The appointment, I'm good with that.
Oddly enough, we have a shortage of attorneys. I never thought I'd live long enough to say that.
You never thought you'd live long enough to admit that?
Yeah, right. But that's the fact, and actually, we're seeing indications that the state is gonna require parity with our district attorney and our judges. You're talking northward of two hundred thousand dollars for that.
That may be Dennis, but today it's not.
Well, you better get used to it as well, I'm kinda scared of that.
When the day comes, we got no choice.
Not all of them.
Right, but I also feel that we are very fortunate to have the Public Defender's Office to be doing such a great job and getting a lot of state funds for this department, and I thank you very much, Joe. Mr. Meddy?
Many of our departments do that, but this salary was a hundred and five thousand in 2020, we raised it to a hundred and forty in 2022, now we're asking it go to a hundred and eighty thousand. Our budget in the Public Defender Office has gone from four hundred and fifty-seven thousand to six hundred and seventy-one thousand. I mean, we've supported this program well, and it's all in one reason why we pulled attention.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So carry. Resolution number six.
I bring this forward, move for its adoption.
I'll second.
Reappointment Director of Public Health. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Resolution number seven, there is a revised version on your desk.
I bring this up, move for its adoption.
Second.
I'd like to say a word something before we vote on this. I'd just like to take a moment and thank Sue McIntyre for her many years of service to Delaware County. Thank her for her vision and leadership with Solid Ways, for her work at the compost facility, the new Mirth Building, for the construction of many new cells and the reclamation of old cells, and her vision from years of work to allow us to extend beyond the original footprint of landfill. I'd also like to thank her for stepping up to DPW Commissioner when we needed one, even though it meant she would be working past her planned retirement date. Sue's four-year term was a seamless transition. Day-to-day operations continued without a hitch, and her leadership helped us through our struggles to site, design, and build new DPW facility or facilities, as it turned out to be. We'll certainly miss Sue, but I think with Jim's appointment, we're gonna be in good hands.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner McIntyre to say a few words.
Yeah, ex-Commissioner McIntyre. Just for everyone's convenience, I'm just gonna speak from here, if that's all right. And I just have very briefly, three things that I wanna take this opportunity to say. First and foremost, I wanna say thank you. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors, thank you to the department heads, the coworkers in this room, to the media for being a conduit to the world. Thank you for all of your support and your trust and your faith in us and what we do. It's been, helped made my life, which was really challenging there for a while, go my smother, and so, my unerring appreciation in that. The second piece, point I'd like to make really quickly, it's been said a couple of times today, and I just really wanna drive this point home, our staff are so important. What we do here as department heads is just one small piece of the role that our staff as a whole play, and I really want to make sure the world recognizes the value of our staff, our number one asset, and to show that appreciation when we can. And the third thing I'm gonna do. In the military, there is a ceremony when there's a transfer of the command. We don't do that in the department, but I think we should. Mr. Jim Thomas, congratulations.
Thank you.
On taking over the Department of Public Works, and I give you the keys to the kingdom. That's everything, thank you very much.
You don't look so happy. Okay, resolution number eight.
I'll bring resolution number eight to the floor and move for its adoption.
Second.
Reappointment Staff DWI Coordinator. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Resolution number nine.
Are you willing to bring that up and proud to bring it up as one of the better downward important ones we've got here in the county? He's a great asset for the county.
See, Charlie, you gotta be on job till the twenty-four, the end of twenty-four, not this year.
A year?
I don't think so.
Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Reappointment Director of Veterans Services Agency.
What a dedicated individual to the veterans. What a dedicated individual to the veterans he is, man. He's set in pretty, he just, he could have his immediate...
Fantastic job.
Drink three.
Unfortunately, we're not gonna retire. Another one of the department heads retired.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number ten.
Bring that up for adoption. Second.
Reappointment, Youth Bureau Director. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number eleven.
I'd bring this up, move for its adoption. Second.
Designation of Depository for Delaware County Funds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution number twelve.
Bring that up. Second.
Two thousand twenty-three Budget Amendment, Public Defender's Office.
Again, I wanna ask, as part of this funding, to fund the Director of Public Defender from forty to eighty.
Personal Services.
Pardon? Personal Services. I believe so.
This is for Joe and Andy's money.
I believe so.
Honey, I believe it is.
Some is, some are.
Yeah.
No, I know. We had, we had to come on.
Thank you. Then, once again, we're just short of attorneys. Used to be, you couldn't throw a stone in this county, a lot of hitting that time.
Now, they don't wanna work for the county, they throw stones.
This is Dennis Valente speaking.
With an E.
Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley? Yes.
Merrill? Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuchel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Layton?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number thirteen.
Bring this up, move for its adoption.
Second.
Authorization for Awards, Department of Public Works. Any questions on this resolution? Please call the roll. Gladstone?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Valente?
Yes.
Tuchel?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Isel?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hinkley?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kosher?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Seta?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other business?
I would like to go to executive session or contract discussion.
I would like to discuss something before the executive session.
Okay.
In any form of thing. Handcock, Handcock, I think maybe the older deposit belongs to what they call Upstate New York Town Association, and they've been promoting real heavy, this, the federal government has forty-two point five billion dollars they're going to allot to communities that are in need of broadband. They have put out a map, and I went in and looked at it, and they had my address wrong. So, you have to encourage people to go in and look at this map, and they designate what broadband service you have available at your house or your business. The unfortunate thing is, this map, you have to respond to challenges by January thirteenth, so you've got nine days. The Upstate New York Town Association was gonna put an ad similar to this in each of the papers that our communities have representing them, which I guess, I use a reporter, the reporter, the Handcock, Harold and the Posit Courier, they're gonna put an ad in each one of them, so you wanna try to look it up, and it has a website to go to to respond. I'm just saying it's important for those in our community that are underserved, there's money here to be had, and so, that's all. It's just something, you...
Piggybacking on what Wayne said, it's important that everybody look this up, look up your address, because the maps are wrong.
Yeah.
And they're saying that people have service that don't have service, and so, they're, they're gonna discredit probably Delaware County, because Delhi Telephone did such a great job, for most of the county, but there's still parts of the county that are underserved.
That's right.
And so, we need to make sure that we're challenging these places where the maps are wrong, because we won't be able to get the service if we don't.
Shall we?
So, just so all of you know, Spencer is on a Southern Tier Eight Board Committee, so Southern Tier Eight has been appointed by the state to represent our counties to ensure that the maps are accurately reviewed. Spencer is doing a GIS analysis and comparison for all properties and actually submitting comments back through Southern Tier Eight, which is who our designated appointment is. That ad was sent to me by the Association of Towns, I'll be putting it on the county Facebook page, so that all county residents can see it and go on and check, and then can inform us if their address is correct or incorrect. Right now, they have about just under thirty thousand properties listed as having broadband service, which we know is inaccurate, but ironically, we're actually, our maps are better than our surrounding counties, it's even worse in the other counties, they pretty much have none of theirs accurate. So, Spencer is working on this. He's been, every two weeks, we have a meeting with the Southern Tier Eight group, which are eight counties that we pay membership into, and we've been working on this for about two and a half years. So, economic development and planning, we've been participating in that working group, Spencer is on, is gonna be moving forward on those calls every two weeks, and he will be making sure that any challenges are forwarded. At our call yesterday, the state is indicating that they're gonna extend the January thirteenth date, because nobody can meet the deadline. I'll certainly keep you posted, if there is a new date posted and what it is, and we'll use social media to get that information to the public. So, we're on it, Wayne.
Thank you.
Sure. It is.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ellis.
You forgot?
Yes.
Like to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with no action to be taken. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So carried.
To subscriber advertise, call six zero seven four six four four zero zero nine.